First item I have on tonight's agenda is Resolution 2619, that is a resolution to appropriate $21,000 in the income tax fund 216. I saw all of your, or I'm sorry, tax commissioner Yost is here. Yost, you want to tell us why?
Yes. Our budget was passed and finished by the time the outgoing tax auditor left the office. And in previous years, she had insurance covered under her spouse, and it was never in our budget. And when she left, did the hiring process, never thought of the, gave the thought of the possibility that the incoming individual would have family insurance, or single insurance, or what have you. It was just overlooked. And since she's electing for family insurance, we have to cover.
Okay.
That's what it's going to cover.
So hence the $21,000 appropriation from the general fund. Any questions for Mr. Yost? Seeing that three readings, okay on this?
Yes.
Three.
All right. We will get three readings on 2619. Thank you, sir. Next item I have on tonight's agenda is Resolution 2719. I'm sorry, Mr. McDaniel will be the second on that, by the way, on 26. 27 is a resolution to issue a then and now certificate for a legal bill to Brick or Eckler. This is coming through Finance, but the law director, Alum, you want to speak to this real quick? And I assume we're going to suspend? Okay?
Yes, if we could, or whenever we have a bill to pay, this is out of a lawsuit that we had that involved stormwater and stormwater collection of these and everything. So I'd have to say we got the taxes also, hopefully we won't be long for this coming. But yes.
But anyway, the then and now is because the services were completed in 2018.
It's my understanding from Denise, who couldn't be here tonight, is that the PO closed out, we got the bill, and so we're just in that transition from last year to this year, then she's basically near to initiate a new PO.
Perfect. Any questions for law director Al? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for suspension so we can pay a legal bill. We shall play on. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next item I have is Resolution 2819. That's a resolution to issue a then and now certificate for a payment to PNC. This is coming through the Service Committee. Mrs. Bobbitt.
Thank you, Mr. Stotan. I believe Mike Thorpe is here this evening.
I am.
And would you please explain why this is a then and now?
A then and now? We started, short and sweet, we started using the PNC card before the purchase order was issued. And we used it pretty heavy for the first two weeks of January, which created the then and now. Oversight on our part?
And you were using this for items that were budgeted and...
Oh, gosh, yes. Yeah, there's no money needed. It's just an oversight on our part. We didn't submit the requisition and get the PO before we started using the card.
Okay. And if no one minds, I am going to ask that we suspend on this this evening, so we can get this taken care of. And I suppose Trish Nettles would like us to pass it this evening also.
Yes, I would.
Any questions for Mr. Thorpe?
Thanks, Mike.
Next item I have is 2919. That's a resolution authorizing the service safety director to sell one auto pulse, automatic CPR device and related accessories to the city of Whitehall. That's coming through the Safety Committee. Mr. Bous.
Thank you. The chief is here to talk about this particular device and why it's going to be sold.
Yes, this device was purchased by us a couple of years ago. It's a device that, one, is becoming more cost prohibitive as we go forward. It's about $200 every time we give cardiac arrest, which is becoming quite costly. But also, it's not as efficient and as user-friendly as we had first tested. And so, Whitehall's expressed an interest in that, and we would like to sell that to Whitehall and then move forward with the Lucas device that we have.
Questions for Chief Ward? And your timing, Mr. Bous?
I'm going to ask for suspension.
And your second is Mr. Woodard?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thanks, chief. We will suspend on Resolution 2919. Are there any departmental updates this evening? I'm going to race to the podium.
She didn't take him out.
She's not quite as fast as me. I'm in her class.
I don't know. I would take her in a little race.
I know you would, councilman, I know. But given my age, I'm a little bit faster. Probably most of you don't know, but with Facebook you may know, that our longtime assistant fire chief, Jack Mattlin, has decided to retire after 28 years. He will be retiring February 15th, and we wish him well. We're going to have a little celebration, and I'll send you out an email as well to invite you. He's done a great job for us. Then also, in anticipation of that retirement, which Jack did a great job letting us know, we gave our assessment center tests. We have those results, and I'm pleased to report that Captain Watts, who's our EMS captain, will assume the assistant chief's position on that day. Mayor Scheffler will be doing the swearing in. So we're excited about the future, but we're also, we are blessed to have Jack, and I don't want to minimize that at all, but some exciting things happening. And I just want to let you guys know, that's coming down the pipe.
Give me that date again, chief.
Ja, what?
The date again?
Oh, February 15th. It's a Friday.
Okay.
And I'll send everybody out an email invite.
Questions for the chief? Very good. Congratulations. I guess, assistant chief and waiting watch, how about that? Thank you.
For the record, two years ago, Chief Ward did beat me in the 5K. But when I offered him a rematch this past fall at the United Way 5K, he declined because he knew I would beat him.
You got your cast off the next day after that race?
No, he actually beat me fair and square, I'll admit it.
You sure he didn't hit the finish line?
But he won't do it again. So, the day before, you, the mayor is promoting our new assistant chief, it's Valentine's Day, and so I just wanted to remind you all that we are offering free rides on our Loops on Valentine's Day for the Ohio Love Transit, push that we are all doing across the state of Ohio. I know several of you were able to get on and ride last year with us on Valentine's Day, so I would encourage you to hop on again this year. Again, it's only on those Loop services, so if you're out and about in the area, please hop on one of those Loops and help us support transit. The other thing I wanted to mention, earlier this year, I had sent out an email to all of council letting you know that ODOT last minute, basically the last week of December, gave us more money as part of that Tiger grant when we purchased our new scheduling software. It was allowing us to add some additional features to what we had originally agreed upon in our contract. So our contract from ODOT went up to over $200,000, which originally it was $100,000. So I'm waiting on final invoices to come in. Again, as I had mentioned in my email earlier this year, I don't know exactly what that means for our budget, but at some point this year, I will probably have to come back and ask you to increase my budget. I won't be asking for additional revenue from you, but we will be appropriating additional revenue from the Tiger grant. Everything we get from this grant is 100% at this point. We had to pay $1,000 as our local match, which we did in 2018, but because they offered it last minute when they saw they had additional funds, we didn't want to turn that money down. It's $100,000 of additional free money for us. So it allowed us to do text messaging alert, it allowed us to add some call notifications that we didn't have before, and an app that people can now download on their phone. And they can use this app to schedule rides, change rides, cancel rides, and actually look and see where the bus is in real time. So it's a really nice, neat feature to have, but again, at some point this year, depending on how our other capital projects come in, I know I'm going to have to come and ask for that, and just wanted to make certain everybody was aware upfront.
Perfect. We always like appropriating against new money, not against the same one. That's good. Any questions for Carrie? Very good. Thank you.
Hope to see you on Valentine's Day.
Oh, we have a question.
Oh, no, I have a question for Carrie.
Okay. Thank you.
Law director Al?
I just have an update. In anticipation of passage of temporary Resolution 4-19 tonight, I have our newest attorney in the office, Mr. Joseph Sabo, here, who I'd like him to come up to the podium and introduce himself.
You telling me he had five and a half minutes to speak?
Fifteen. He has to fill fifteen.
Fifteen minutes, wow. Getting tougher.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Joseph Sabo. You can all call me Joe. Only my mom calls me Joseph when I'm in trouble. And I just, a little bit about myself, I'm born and raised in Ohio. I'm originally from the northeast Ohio area. I went to undergraduate at Kent State University, and I went to law school at Case Western Reserve University. And ever since I was little, I've always wanted to make a difference, whether it's in the lives of people or animals. And so when I got out of law school, I was doing a lot of research and writing, stuck behind a computer screen. I felt a little disconnected from making an impact or difference in the world. And so when I, when I applied for this job, and I had the interview, and I eventually got the job, I was really excited, and I'm really excited now to be a part of a community where I feel like I can be making a difference and making that community safer and bringing justice. So I look forward to getting to know all of you and working with you and making, and I really appreciate the opportunity.
Well, wait a minute.
We have to go through the battery of questions. Live up to your time, so.
There's lots of questions here. Who has a question for Mr. Sabo?
Actually, I have a comment. You were sitting out there. I'm old, because I thought you were a high school student coming in.
I'll take those as compliments.
Until you get our age.
Yeah, exactly. I used to be the youngest one in my office. Now I'm the oldest because I have grandkids.
Oh. It's going to help work.
We do have cases picking up Mrs. Teener afterwards.
That's nice. Any further questions that we can irritate or pick on this nice young lad? All right, well, Joseph, welcome. Thank you for coming, and we look forward to working with you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
We have one more. This is the one that is scheduled, Tax Department, tonight.
Save the best for last.
Save the best for last.
Okay, so just to recap, 2018, we had budgeted $19,900,000, but we collected $19,964,000. And for 2019, we budgeted $20,500,000. And some notable mentions for 2019 include, in 2017, the fourth quarter estimate was due December 15th, 2017. And for 2018, the fourth quarter estimate was due January 15th, 2019. So we can expect a bump in revenue in 2019 over 18. And I can tell you, as of today, we are over for last year this year in January. But that won't be reported until we finish January. Also, with some software updates and information provided by our software provider, CMI, this coming year, we'll be able to take advantage of some productivity enhancements, and the information that we receive in the way of tax returns, W2s, and reconciliations can be, or will be processed a little easier, quicker, and take advantage of those processes from CMI, our provider. And the last for our department would be, the training of the new tax auditor is underway and doing good. Hopefully she'll be up and running by April 15th.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Yost? The only question I would ask is, when did, how did we discover new enhancements of the CMI module?
They do, they upgrade all the time. Their newest upgrade was just done, I think, in December, and it was just downloaded in early January.
Anything you can share that's really exciting in the tax world?
Just other than processing W2s and reconciliations, just being done quicker through the system that they, using federal data and just being able to download it without having to key information in or...
Well, that's good. That's efficiency.
Yes.
Using systems instead of people, that's good.
Yes, with that, and a few other things that I have looking into as far as processing statements. I think we should be able to hopefully utilize more time processing and looking for taxpayers.
Good. We like that. We'll make sure they're all paying. Questions? Seeing none, very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you updating us. Any other departmental... Seeing none. If I can say something? Seeing none, I'll defer to Dr. Rule for tonight's meeting prep.
Thank you, Chairman Stotan. We have two ordinances tonight, February 2nd and 3rd. Ordinances to accept utility easements and then grant supplemental easements coming from law.
Yes, as you say, we have two, 219 and 319. General utility easement on 219 being granted to the city, and the city being granting an easement to AEP in 319. Each of those will be two readings. And I believe Mr. Bous will be leaving the state soon, and I won't be here for the next meeting, so I will have Mr. Schoonover second us.
Mr. Schoonover will second both 2 and 3, and this was, you said two readings on both?
Two.
Two readings on both. Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, that completes our meeting prep for tonight, and I will pass it back to the chair.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other items for Finance?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that Finance Committee convene into executive session to consider confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal finance statements for economic development assistance involving public infrastructure improvements, and that this executive session is necessary to protect the interest of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G8. The executive session should include the following: Finance Chairman, all city elected officials, Service Safety Director Paul Martin, and Economic Development Director Mike Pettit.
I will second that motion, and I need an affirmative from you to go into session, so give me a yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we are in executive session.
Father, we thank you for this day and your blessings. We thank you that you have continued to be with us, for you are so, so good to us. We give you thanks and praise for all that you're doing in our lives. We pray that you would be with us tonight. May you lead, guide, and direct us, that we, as we go about our work, will make decisions that are in the best interest of the citizens and the city of Lancaster. Continue to be with us in all we do, we pray. In Jesus' name, amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Bous?
Here.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour? Mr. Groff?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mr. Stotan?
Here.
Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Mr. Woodard?
Let the record reflect that eight of nine city council members are in attendance.
Mr. Stotan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mrs. Downhour from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Motion in the second to excuse Mrs. Downhour from tonight's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mrs. Downhour is excused. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated January 14th, 2019.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to receive and file the journal. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials.
Email dated January 19th, 2019, regarding draft meeting minutes submitted by Mr. Stotan. Email dated January 28th, 2019, regarding Harris and Keener excavating door hangers submitted by Service Safety Director Paul Martin.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There are three. Notice to the legislative authority of a transfer of a liquor license from MDL Inc., doing business as Tom Sanoco, located at 62 East Main Street, Lancaster, Ohio, 43130, to SK Investments Fuel Inc., located at the same location, submitted by the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, 6606 Tussing Road, Reynoldsburg. Ohio Ethics Commission filing reminder for 2018 financial disclosure statement submitted by Jean Bogir, Financial Disclosure Coordinator. Notice to the legislative authority of a transfer of a liquor license from JL8586 LLC, doing business as Boot Liquors of Lancaster, located at first floor and basement, 434 North Columbus Street, Lancaster, Ohio, 43130, to CW Doughboys LLC, doing business as Bar, located at first floor, basement, at 434 North Columbus Street, Lancaster, Ohio, submitted by the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, sorry, Reynoldsburg, Ohio.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to receive and file communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any special presentations tonight? In fact, there are, we have one. Thank you, yes. Ms. Teener has asked that a guest join us this evening, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Teener to introduce her guest.
Yes, this organization for teenagers and whatnot here in Lancaster, the Police Athletic League with Wes Sims and Jamie Mathias, and they've brought a couple of their students here tonight.
Very good. Mr. Mathias, please join us, and your guests as well.
I knew Wes was going to come up, so I want to thank Becky for the invitation. I'm the program coordinator for the Lancaster Police Activities League, and what we do is, five nights a week, we open up a gym for a couple hours for kids to come in, and I try to wear them out a little bit before I send them home. So up and above that, we do community service projects, we've done downtown cleanup, and we get set up the Santa House, and sometimes I take them out, we clean up parks and side of the road and that kind of stuff. Try to get them involved, I guess, in the community a little bit. So, and this is a free program for kids eight to 18, you know, as long as they're in school. And I have former students and other, other community members come in to try to mentor the kids a little bit also. So, and so what we thought we would do is, I'd bring a couple of my young people in here, and they would kind of tell you about themselves and why they come to the POW.
Hello, I'm Luke Farrell. I'm 15 years old. I'm from Bloom Carroll, and when I first went to the POW, it was for, you know, conditioning for football and everything. But after a while, when you get to know everybody, you learn skills and everything, it becomes like a family. And after a while, you learn skills inside and outside of boxing. So, yeah, it was, it's very, it's very great. It's a very great program. I guess you say so myself.
Hi, I'm Sarah Ballzer, 15, go to Lancaster. I have been with the POW for like, three years, and I first started to get in shape, and then I grew to love it, and I made a lot of friends, and Coach takes us out to do a bunch of community service. He helped me start doing other stuff, like, we did stuff with the homeless shelter and everything else within the community. It's a good program.
Very good. Sir, you haven't had anything?
Not really.
Okay.
You know, I've been very fortunate to travel the world, and I was a professional fighter. Things were winding down, and now looking overseas, I might have a couple more left in me, but opening up a new gym down in Logan and doing the same thing here, down in Logan. So, been very fortunate, and having the opportunity for these youth to pick up skills and meet business owners and get a trade is our focus.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone have questions?
Yeah, any questions? I wanted to add too, while I was here, I have a really tall kid that comes in once in a while, and I think he's knocked one of my bags off the chain, so I don't, I don't try to fight these kids, but I would take his mom in the rent because I might be able to take her if anybody...
I see, I see.
Maybe you have any questions?
I see Odder Nettles with her head down back there. I guess that's who we're talking about. Yeah, very good. You gave us a handout, and we appreciate that. Could you, because folks are watching as well, let us know where you're located, where you do this at?
Yeah, we operate out of the YMCA Recplex, which is on 1180 East Locust Street, and again, it's a free program. When we tell them it's free, we tell them we want them to be part of the Police Activities League, and so what that consists of is me bugging them, asking them how they're doing in school, and, you know, how homes going, and, and what they want to do when they get out of school. And if not, if they don't want to do that, they can pay $20 a month, but most everybody defaults to becoming a Police Athletic League member, so I try to keep an eye on everybody. And, and since we started the program, and we've been doing this over 10 years, I got kids in the military, I got people in law enforcement, and working in the prison system, and got a bunch of good kids, and I tell them I expect big things out of them. So some of them might be sitting around here one of these days, hopefully, so.
That's great.
So I've got some good kids.
Very good. Mr. Bous?
How many do you have in front of you?
One night I had 24, so we were kind of stumbling over each other. I got kids that come in once a week, I got kids that are there every night, so I don't know what a total would be.
Total number, well, you do homeschool, tell them to homeschool.
Well, yeah, I do a homeschool program through the week. I also work with the criminal science program at Stanbury once a week. I do a small, a small class at Olive Dale, they're not children, and I do a rock-steady boxing program, which is boxing for people with Parkinson's. I do that a couple times a week, and so they're actually older than I am. But it's all kind of geared around boxing and fitness. We're not a competitive club so much, but just trying to keep kids active and just giving them something to be part of.
Very good. Other questions? Ms. Bobbitt?
So I know that, that you do get a grant from CDBG. I'm sure you fundraise. Do you, so, so what do you do for fundraising? And then, do you also have a board?
Yeah, I don't fundraise, so.
Well, fundraising, I mean, we have a phone solicitation company. We're fortunate, we have the, we work with Lancaster Bingo, we do All-Star Gaming pool tabs, and yeah, we get the city block grant, which we're very fortunate and appreciate that very much. It helps pay for our rent there at the YMCA, and allows us to be able to let these kids come in for free, so.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Would you have a comment?
Yes, okay, I see Mr. Martin there.
What is your website?
Lancaster, yes, nancasterpal.com. So, yeah, I think it might be on the card, I think it's on the card.
Yes, I know it's here, I just wanted people to hear it in the public.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
And I needed to tell you, one of our board members, yes, Harry Hiles.
Ah.
Harry, you guys are familiar with Harry? He's on the board. He was actually one of the first ones that helped form the POW, so.
That's great.
Him and Chief Bailey, when Chief Bailey was here, so.
Very good. Mr. Stotan?
I just think it's impressive you have 15-year-olds that aren't afraid to walk up and talk into a microphone and speak in full sentences, and I'm sure...
They're doing better than me!
Well, I didn't want to say that, because you could pretty much drive me into the ground. Yeah, so, but anyway, I think it's awesome, I mean, you know, the young folks that can come up here and have a conversation in the microphone and not have stage fright, it's, you know, that's a life skill that many of us around this table probably say we couldn't have done at 15-years-old, so it's impressive what you do, and thank you for that.
Very good. Anyone else? Ms. Teener?
I went and observed one night. I just showed up unannounced, and it was impressive, because we went in, kids are busy. Nobody's talking, nobody's on their cell phones, no iPads, no anything. We went outside into the hallway, never heard anybody talking, they were that focused on what they're doing. So, it's a very good program, and also, the Logan Police Department is helping you too, isn't it? Aren't they down?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Opening this up, so.
Very good.
But it's, anybody can go in, I'd encourage everybody to go and just take a look.
Yeah, absolutely, anytime.
Very good. Anyone else? Well, Ms. Teener, thank you for the great suggestion of someone to come in and present to us. Thanks to each of you for being here tonight, let's show them our appreciation. Thank you all very much. Very good. Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
During our city council meetings, Lancaster City Council sets time aside for voters and taxpayers to address city council on any item or issue they would like. If you're interested in addressing Lancaster City Council this evening, please come forward, sign in with your name and address at the podium, state the same in the microphone so that all can hear for the record. We ask that you would keep in accordance with the count, the rules of city council, your comments to five minutes or less. Please also note that at this time, city council will not respond to you but may choose to do so at a later time during the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Thank you all for being here. Reports of standing committees.
Finance committee meeting minutes for January twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, submitted by Mr. Stotin.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
A motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of special committees.
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearing scheduled tonight, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Resolution ninety-seven eighteen.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into an engineering contract with Holland Associates for general engineering and inspection services offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution ninety-seven eighteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution ninety-seven dash eighteen. Mr. Woodard.
This is a yearly motion that we have in order to have the services for contracting to get the costs and everything available.
Very good. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Here with me just one second. Had him backwards, had him backwards, I'm sorry. Mr. Bowles? Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Temporary Resolution ninety-seven dash eighteen passes eight to zero. Temporary Resolution ninety-eight dash eighteen.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with independent contractor Ben Warner for inspection services offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council withdraw this motion from the agenda side.
Third, second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to withdraw this from the agenda of city council. Mr. Woodard.
Uh, this is one.
That is ninety-nine eighteen.
Oh, not ninety-eight?
Not ninety-eight.
All right.
Mr. Woodard, would you like to withdraw your motion to withdraw?
I'll second that.
We have a motion to withdraw the motion to withdraw in a second, therefore it is now back to normal. Mr. Woodard, what is your pleasure on ninety-eight dash eighteen?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution ninety-eight eighteen.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution ninety-eight dash eighteen. Mr. Woodard.
Again, this is one that we need, where we need independent inspection. We need to be able to make those decisions.
Okay. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles? Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Temporary Resolution ninety-eight dash eighteen passes eight to zero. Temporary Resolution ninety-nine dash eighteen.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids for the River Valley Highlands Sanitary Manhole Replacement Project, offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council to withdraw Resolution Temporary ninety-nine eighteen.
Second.
A motion and a second to withdraw Temporary Resolution ninety-nine dash eighteen. Mr. Woodard.
Uh, this one is no longer needed at this time, we can come back later with something else, but this is not necessary, and so we pass to withdraw.
Further discussion on the motion to withdraw?
Uh, I just.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, what's the status of this particular project, then?
Let me see if I have an email on that, I don't. Did you, okay. Steven Felston from the Engineering Department, Stormwater, stated that he did not need this at this time, I don't recall.
Oh, he sent an email about this, that this was already covered?
Yes.
Gotcha.
As far as we know, this is covered.
I got it, okay.
If it isn't, we'll come back later.
Yeah, prior legislation has picked this up.
Right.
Thank you.
I remember that email? Very good.
I don't have it with me, so I'm sorry.
Further discussion then on the motion to withdraw? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Temporary Resolution ninety-nine dash eighteen is withdrawn. We now have second reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution one dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the Law Director's Office to apply for Violence Against Women Act Grant, VAWA, offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President, this is the second of three readings, please.
Second reading on Temporary Resolution one dash nineteen. Temporary Resolution two dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the disposition of city property, no longer needed via auction or internet auction for twenty nineteen, offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President, this is the second of three readings, please.
Second reading on Temporary Resolution two dash nineteen. Temporary Resolution three dash nineteen.
A resolution to allow the Lancaster City Auditor to request and advance the funds from Fairfield County of the city's apportionment of tax settlement for twenty nineteen, offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Resolution Temporary Three nineteen.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution three dash nineteen. Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Resolution Temporary Three nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution three dash nineteen. Further discussion, Mr. Stotin?
No, thanks.
Other discussion around the table? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Resolution three nineteen passes eight to zero. Temporary Resolution four dash nineteen.
A resolution to approve the appointment of Joseph Sabo as Assistant Prosecutor in the Law Director's Office, offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. Groff?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make, bidip, bidip, make a motion that we suspend in the rules and waive the third reading of Resolution four nineteen.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution four dash nineteen. Mr. Groff?
Uh, yes, we met the gentleman in the finance meeting this morning, or this evening, and I don't really have anything to add to that, other than what's been stated.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Temporary Resolution four dash nineteen passes eight to zero. Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution four dash nineteen passes eight to zero. Temporary Resolution four dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of phosphate for use by the Water Department, offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard?
Second reading.
Second reading on Temporary Resolution five dash nineteen. Temporary Resolution six dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of salt for use by the Water Department, offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard?
Second reading.
Second reading on Temporary Resolution six dash nineteen. Temporary Resolution seven dash nineteen.
A resolution to carry over and reappropriate funds to pay bills in the Water Pollution Control Department, offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution seven dash nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution seven dash nineteen. Mr. Woodard?
And again, this is one of those that we have to do at the start of the year, and it's just reappropriating the funds that have already been allocated, and there are new funds that are worried about.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woodard. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution seven dash nineteen passes eight to zero. Temporary Resolution eight dash nineteen.
A resolution to carry over and reappropriate funds to pay bills in the Water Department, offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council suspend its rules and waive the third reading, Temporary Resolution eight dash nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution eight dash nineteen. Mr. Woodard?
And again, this is another one that we do at the beginning of the year in order to show the reappropriation, so that we can go ahead and pay the money we need to spend.
Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. Woodard?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution eight nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution eight dash nineteen. Further discussion, Mr. Woodard?
No further discussion.
Other discussion around the table? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution eight dash nineteen passes eight to zero. Temporary Resolution nine dash nineteen.
A resolution to amend the certificate with the county auditor, appropriate from the unencumbered balance, increase receipts, and complete a fund transfer in the wastewater fund six oh four and in the wastewater utility reserve fund six two nine, offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council suspend its rules and waive the third reading, Temporary Resolution nine dash nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution nine dash nineteen. Mr. Woodard?
And again, this is another one where we're reappropriating the money, we have to start the new year from last year, and again, all three of these reasoning with two readings is because they're just normal things that we've already discussed earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. Woodard?
And no further comment.
Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
A resolution to amend the certificate with the county auditor, appropriate from the unencumbered balance, increase receipts, and complete a fund transfer in the water fund 603 and the water utility reserve fund 627 offered by Mr. Woodard, seconded by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading. Temporary resolution 16...or 10-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution 10-19. Mr. Woodard?
And again, this is another one where we're just going in and taking care of the business and starting the new year.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Temporary...or I'm sorry, motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Temporary resolution 10-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record. Temporary resolution 10-19. We've made you earn your money tonight, Mr. Woodard. One final time.
Our departments do work, it's just ours all come by...
All at the front end, very good. Any further discussion?
No.
Discussion around the table? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Temporary resolution 10-19 carries or passes eight to zero. Temporary resolution 11-19.
A resolution authorizing the service safety director to advertise for requests for proposals for operations of a public transit system for the city of Lancaster and to enter into a contract offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover?
Second of three, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution 11-19. Temporary resolution 12-19.
A resolution authorizing the service safety director to execute a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for SFY 2019 through 2020 Ohio elderly and disabled transit fare assistance program offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Schoonover?
Second of three, please.
Temporary...or second reading on temporary resolution 12-19. Temporary resolution 13-19.
A resolution authorizing the city of Lancaster to apply for the Meals on Wheels older adult alternatives at Fairfield County Inc., 2019 through 2020 grant offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover?
Second of three, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution 13-19. Temporary resolution 14-19.
A resolution to authorize the purchase of four replacement vehicles from the state term contract for use by transit offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Schoonover?
Second of three, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution 14-19. Temporary resolution 15-19.
A resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through United States Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, as authorized under the federal transit laws as codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5311 financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fare Assistance Program 5 through 39 and 5 through 39B and any other grant that become available through ODOT and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon each grant application approval offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover?
Second of three, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution 15-19. Temporary resolution 16-19.
A resolution authorizing the service safety director to advertise for bids and to enter into contract for department...for transit department building renovations offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Looks like you're going to be the busy one next meeting there, Mr. Schoonover?
Yep. Second of three, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution 16-19. Temporary resolution 20-19.
A resolution authorizing the Lancaster Police Department to apply for the 2019 through 2020 drug use prevention grant offered by Mr. Woodard, seconded by Mr. Stotin.
Mr. Woodard?
Second reading, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution 20-19. Temporary resolution 21-19.
A resolution authorizing the service safety director to advertise for bids and enter into contract or contracts for mowing and other landscape maintenance services for the city cemeteries offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover?
Second of three, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution 21-19. Temporary resolution 23-19.
A resolution to transfer funds for reimbursement of maintenance performed on state highways within the city of Lancaster on an as-needed basis up to a maximum of $125,000 for the calendar year 2019, amend the certificate of appropriation with the county auditor and fund 290 and to appropriate from the unencumbered balance offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Schoonover?
Second of three, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution 23-19. Now, first reading on resolution 26-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate with the county auditor in the income tax fund 216 offered by Mr. Stotin, seconded